The meeting today, so at 3:46 we'll open up the emergency meeting for July 26, 2017. There's only one item on the emergency meeting, that's railroad lease discussion. The reason why we call the emergency meeting is for continued operations of the Lake County Rail Line, and that's what I'm declaring as emergency. Do you see any other thing need to be stated on that, Mr. Bailey?
The only other thing we could add is under the circumstances, we're trying to get a new operator as quickly as possible. Lake Railway has indicated that they need this information as soon as possible. The line has issues that needs to be addressed, and Lake Railway has just notified the suppliers that they're going to be increasing their rates, so all these things go into making this an emergency.
Thank you. And so Denise will capture that under the disclosure of emergency meeting. With that, we have a draft operating agreement before us that has been being worked on by legal counsel, our department head, and myself as an individual commissioner. This has been brought forward to the other commissioners for their review and to look at. This emergency meeting is to be able to talk amongst us if there's any verbiage that needs to be added, changed, or deleted, and maybe possibly even taken some action. So with that said, Mr. Bailey, do you need to add more to that?
Just a little bit of explanation. As you said, the three of us, myself, yourself, and Dave have been reviewing this document as it's gone through several drafts. We've made proposed changes, all of which the operator has agreed to put in. There's been very little of anything that I would describe as contentious. They've agreed to everything with maybe some changes in verbiage, and with the exception of the annual fee, which I'm sure we'll discuss, they've gone along with everything. I view this as similar to what we do with union negotiations. We have a union negotiations team that negotiates the final, a proposed final agreement with the union, and that's proposed to the board for the board to discuss. The board does not have to approve it, but it comes with the recommendation of the negotiating team. This is being presented in the same vein as that. So the board discusses and makes its own decision, but we've put this through several versions and bring it to the board, not as an initial working document, but as something that has been worked over to this point, to what we think is a nearly completed yet non-completed document that is in favor, that would be in the county's interest to agree to. That's all.
Okay. With that said, I believe it would be appropriate for questions come forward, and maybe I just go, as the other commissioners may have questions, start out with, and go from page to page instead of jumping all over. Mr. Bailey, are you good with that?
I think it's a good idea. That way I can make notes as we go along. So if you start with page one and then sort of go down the list of the commissioners in any order you wish with their questions, I can either, we can discuss and answer the questions, or we can, you know, list them and then move on and come back to that.
Okay. So we'll do that. Is the board good with that?
Yeah. Just go ahead.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Mr. Bailey did send out that amended agreement, or amended draft yesterday, and so what I'm going to read off of is what I had marked up the previous day and even early yesterday. So it has to not confuse everyone that maybe some of those things already changed that I might mention.
And I'm in the same place. I don't have the other one printed off, so, and I'm not sure. I think Commissioner Kestner's probably will all have the non-amended one. Am I correct, Commissioner?
I had one printed off yesterday, yes, thereabouts.
Morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all right. So page one, the only thing, and I don't know where it came in, that I had was under definitions, been that states throughout the lease has agreed to in writing. I just wanted under definitions for it to be clarified in writing means for the county commissioners, so that we don't end up with, if this turns into a long-term lease, different department heads possibly coming on and saying, well, I'll agree to that. It needs to come before the board. Anything in writing needs to come from the board. Jim, I asked for that clarification. I think you added that, didn't you?
Yes, that is now in subsection 1A, and it said it was referred to the county. When used in connection with approvals or consents as required from the county by the operator to undertake any actions described herein refers to the Lake County Board of Commissioners.
So does anybody else have anything on page one?
I have a quick question on the Goose Lake Railway LLC. Is that a formally established LLC all completed?
Yes, that's what Bruce Addington is putting together as the nominal operator, and he will subcontract with an actual operator.
I've got that. I was just wondering if the company, the limited liability has all been finalized paperwork and registered and all.
I will, as we are going through this, I can check on that.
Dan, anything on page one?
No. I'm good.
Page two, anything for anybody?
Nope.
Nope. I had read the material at first effect twice, and it was nicely written.
Okay. Page three?
I just had under track each 1A, 1 dash capital A, A, for whatever reason, because I'm just now reading it again, I just underlined exclusive use question mark down here, the last part of that paragraph. Exhibit A attached here for, and incorporated herein for the operator's exclusive use. Nothing more than that. Just, I underlined it and put a question mark, but I was just curious.
And I don't have no question on that. Maybe a thought is, is that they need the exclusive use and possession for the purpose of providing rail transportation operations.
Exactly. I think it was more to do with exhibit A, which I haven't seen exhibit A yet.
Yeah, and good catch, that was, I had a question mark there under exhibit A. So that's something, Mr. Bailey, and then the next one down is exhibit C, and so those two things, I'm sorry, I'll cut that. Those two things are, I don't believe they're in this, so.
Right. I don't have that. I will ask them for copies of exhibit A and exhibit C. Or do we do all, maybe I see?
Be nice to know what they are.
Yeah. Yeah. I was reading this and just didn't know what they were.
And my guess is, is that was taken straight out of our previous lease and cut and pasted over there possibly, but yeah, we do need that information.
Quick question for you, Jim.
Yes.
Who put this agreement together?
It started with the legal counsel for Goose Lake LLC, or Addington and his subcontractor, and then it was sent to us. So it, I would say that probably, while it started with them, I would say at least 50% of it, maybe more, are changes and additions that Commissioner Winters and I requested.
But I'd say way past 50%. The first one we had was a two-pager.
Well, the reason I'm bringing that up is, you're a child because it's very comprehensive.
Yeah. All right. Page four.
To answer Commissioner Kestner's other question, Goose Lake Railway LLC is in legal existence. It was filed on July 14.
Okay, good.
Good, thank you. Page four, either Commissioner, I have nothing.
Nope.
Page five, same for me, nothing.
Just a little edit on page five, under A2, the locomotive, single, and cruise rural situation to provide, to that, I just had to edit, should be locomotives?
I think so, yes. Now I'll have them change that.
And Jim, I have on the obligation of the operator, we talked to him about they being responsible for the fencing, the weeds, and all that. I regret this, I really can't identify where it really stands out.
Which page?
It's page five, and I'm just not sure where it stands out, where we made that agreement with them, they would be responsible for the fencing weeds on the, in the right-of-way of the line.
Yeah. Fencing was a question on my part, too.
If it gets in there.
I think.
Well, it, as we talked about yesterday, Mr. Bailey, there's some assumptions you have to make when it talks about the right-of-way, I mean, by the way it's written, the right-of-way is the responsibility to take care of it. And it might even said including weeds, but it never did say. I think you might have put it in the other draft, fences and other things that you sent us.
I'm trying to find it, but that is correct. It specifically mentions weeds, but that is, they generally have to maintain the right-of-way, and then it was like, for example, weed removal. So you're right, the assumption is, and this is based on some conversations that Commissioner Winters had with Bruce Addington, that they understand that fencing and things like that are all going to be their responsibility, and there's going to be some discussion about that as to what needs to be done when there's an issue, but they're aware of the fencing. So even though we didn't specifically mention fencing, that is part of maintaining the lease right-of-way.
Yeah, and I think my email to you yesterday was, and I don't know where you put it, but it was for them to be responsible for the full right-of-way, which would be inclusive of fences. And the fences is, I don't know if it's railroad, an STB, or what, but it's a requirement of the railroad operating by some law.
It's the RS in that specific, say the owner or the operator will maintain, shall maintain the fences.
And I don't, I think it's broader than the RS, because we're in California, too.
California, Catherine, it's written slightly different. It's the same gist, it's the same gist.
Okay.
So if you go, if you happen, if you had the new draft from yesterday afternoon, under three, operator's obligation, and you went to I, I think, the paragraph reads, the operator shall maintain, repair, and preserve the trackage presented to section six of the agreement, except as provided elsewhere, agreeing the operator assumes full responsibility for the trackage as an effective date hereof, as is whereas the operator shall maintain the condition of the right-of-way, including vegetation control, as necessary for the operator to conduct railroad operations over the trackage.
Perfect. That is correct. That's where it is, and I'm glad you found it, because we need to have a comma after the term vegetation control. So I need to have to do that.
Can you point that out?
It's in the new one. I don't think we.
The terminology I heard was responsible for vegetative control for the operation of the rail. How did that address noxious weeds?
Oh, that's what the vegetation would be.
Well, the language I heard was controlled vegetation for the operation of the railroad. I think that's just keeping a brush off the railroad.
So what?
Right.
I think what Commissioner Kestner's concern is, is what we get the complaints on is off of the roadbed of the railroad, out to the, all the way to that easement, to the fence, there's quite a distance, some places that 60 feet or better, and the maintenance of those weeds, maybe something a little more specific. There is that, a weed or brush, all the maintenance to the full right-of-way, full width of the right-of-way.
Well, what I'm focused on is noxious weeds.
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey, I ask a straightforward question here. How is controlling noxious weeds necessary to the operation of railroad?
Fire danger, fire danger, the spread of noxious weeds, online, landowners, yeah.
And this will cover that. This will cover that, because any vegetation control that is necessary for the operator for conducting, to conduct railroad operations, that's their responsibility. Now, but this says, as long as I get that comma put in after vegetation control, that indicates that's just an example. They have to maintain the condition of the right-of-way as necessary to conduct operations.
Okay. I'm good with that clarification myself.
Still a little reserved, but I'll go with you, Jim.
It's amazing what a comma will do. If he says no on the comma, then that's an issue, but the comma is important. That is what will make this, they are agreeing to maintain the condition of the right-of-way. This is the way it would read, this is the way.
I'm tracking it, Jim.
So we're clear. Operator shall maintain the condition of the right-of-way as necessary for the operator to conduct railroad operations over the trackage. That's what it says. The vegetation control is simply a specific example of the kind of thing, so we've gotten in there, and as long as the commas put in there, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Shown, you was getting ready to make a comment? Did that clarify?
Well, I was just going to ask Mr. Bailey, since we had such a wonderful visit yesterday, to share with the other two commissioners, kind of the same, point-blank statements that he made to me and put things into perspective, but, you know.
Okay. I'm happy to do that. I'm not sure how many of them I made, but I think one that was particularly provocative is that, and this strikes me as a very one-sided agreement in favor of the county, and if I were the attorney for the operator and the subcontractor, I'd advise them not to sign it. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, sort of, and I disagreed with that at that time, and said, you know, I read it, and I looked at it as not fleshed that way, but I think the key part of this, Mr. Bailey, as we talked yesterday, is your frustration, their attorney's frustration, all of our frustration, you know, we want to get to where we've got to get, but the fact that they, from their point of view, and that one email that when you sent the attachment, pointed that out from their attorney, how many more times are you going to send us this with changes?
Right. And I did explain to him the nature of what we're having to do with the group doing the negotiations and presenting to the board, and he understood that he thanked me for that clarification, so, he knows that, you know.
Well, for my fellow commissioners, Mr. Bailey, that was why I was frustrated all the rest of the afternoon into the evening, because it was loud.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's not, it's not a bad thing, but I am glad you explained it to him, because it was really an appropriate way, I felt, to do the initial review and to get it as close as we could, but with the clear understanding, two of the commissioners needed to be able to weigh into things, because Commissioner Winters, you know, he's pretty straightforward on that stuff. He says, you know, we're not going to catch everything, the group that did, you know, you and him and Dave. And so I was just sitting there thinking, well, then we're done.
No, I explained to him in the email, I said, look, we had to do it this way, because the alternative was to get the entire board together and have a public meeting in which we went back and forth, line by line, over the document. And I said, that would not have been efficient, but we're trying to get this done as quickly as possible. And he appreciated that, he said, I'm going to forward that on to my client so they understand what's going on, so.
Good, good. So I thought we needed to get that out for the full discussion here today, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. I think that's almost what my email to you this morning said, too, so thank you for following up on that. So we're on to page six. I think it's going to take some discussion. I got to read what I marked down, so I'll let Commissioner Kestner, he's got some.
I've already crossed them off, I'm satisfied with it.
Commissioner Shown, do you have any on page?
Yeah, whatever pages you all. I think, you know, I started on J, and I think that it has now been changed, is that not right, Mr. Bailey, from the other? The J part was after the, in parentheses, the trackage access agreements, and the operator shall be entitled to all revenues from trackage access agreements and utility easements during the initial term of this agreement and any and all subsequent extensions.
Right. The, we have a parenthetical after that, says the operator acknowledges the county shall be entitled to approve all future utility crossings, and shall be entitled to negotiate new terms for existing utility easements. So they understand that any easement that is granted, we're the ones who are going to grant the easement, and then the terms of that easement are going to be part of our discussions with them. What they are talking about here are easements that run across the track, as opposed to easements that are within the track right-of-way. And I explained to them that there are times when we have pipelines or the lines that are in the right-of-way, but don't affect the rail line, and the revenues for those would go to the county, whereas if we did have to cross over the rail line in some way, then there might be a situation where we'd agree that percentage-wise, they would get part of that revenue, something like that. But he understood that, and we took out the term utility early on, they were talking about track lease agreements, so that was removed. This is really focusing on things that cross over the track as opposed to run alongside of it.
Yeah, that's what you said yesterday.
Most of your locates.
So that's, that's all I had on that, but on the end, I thought about this a great deal, and I shared.
Oh, Commissioner, I need, I need to jump back up to J.
Okay.
Just an example, Jim, and I appreciate you putting in there a possible percentage and everything, we have allowed and approved when Ruby went underneath it, if I remember right, that easement and the value of that did come to the county, I believe, when Ruby went underneath the track. If my, I see one, I can't see Dan, but I see one shaking his head, yes, and I, so we definitely, as utilities come through, we need to be part of that negotiation.
Yes. Because utilities are an outlier of disagreement.
Yes, and as I pointed out to the operator, the reason we want this is because the operator has absolutely no right to agree to an easement, because they don't have any property rights involving the land. We're the only ones who can grant easement across any part of the right-of-way, and you realize that, so we're good on that.
Perfect. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Shown.
Well, I was just jumping down to the C part, and, you know, I know it's rewritten in the new edition of this, but it was either 36, because someone asked me, do you remember that, as 36 or 48? But we had a significantly higher, either $3,000 or $4,000 a month lease agreement, and at some point in time previously, just, you know, for all of our history, we agreed to cut the amount off down to $12,000 a year, period, a thousand a month, so they could put it back into the track. And now we've got certain thresholds of how much money they put into the track, and if the threshold is so low, that we're essentially leasing that to them for zero, and as a special revenue fund, we're going to get zero, and we're going to have costs related to the railroad operation over a period of time, and we're going to have to, the only means I know other than, you know, if we get easement money or something like that, utility easement, we're going to have to go to general fund. But the bigger question to me, and I, you know, we really appreciate Cornerstone and Bruce stepping up, and they're going to do a great job and all of that, but I think it's only reasonable that we ask for, as a minimum, just, and without any other caveats perhaps, to, because if the who's them, it's their requirement to keep the line maintained, but if the who's them to really maintain it, and rather than have thresholds, just simply say, we're going to lease it to you for $1,000 a month, end of story. That's my view of it.
And there's been some confusion on this. I'm there at the $12,000. My email to legal counsel earlier was, is this can be a long-term lease, and there's no inflation factor on that. You guys know me and my inflation factor world, but it's real. I mean, there was discussion about $6,000, and I think I must have carried that a little wrong or whatever. I was just trying to get through this first year of that being waived, and it could be at $6,000, whatever. Dave Berman and I had some discussion individually with each other about what do you think we could get by with in revenue? But I think the $12,000 is, after the first year, is the minimum, with either a clause to be able to openly negotiate that in the future, or an inflation factor put on that. So that.
Or we just go to what we had before, in a sense, and we say 1% of the gross revenue generated, if they're amenable to that, and if they're not generating a lot of revenue, then we shouldn't be charging them a lot for a line, because they're providing a service that we as the county want provided. But if they are generating revenue, then we're going to get some revenue back, which is fair. You know, there's a lot of ways to look at this. The last thing we want to do is give any intent or any indication to Bruce that we're trying to hold him up. We're just trying to make sure we can do what we need to do for our obligations and not go bankrupt ourselves.
I'm with you on that, and that's been my explanation to Mr. Addington, was is that we have to build some kind of revenue nest egg as there is cost come, that are associated with having this lease, whether it's them coming to us and asking us to be part in a grant, it's our regular admin cost, we charge admin to that fund, plus there's the amount of time Dave spends on this, which we truly don't take any dollars for his time out of it, but it takes a lot of time. We put a lot of time into this, so.
At least cover our costs.
Yeah. The 1% of gross revenue created on this line, in our other lease, it was $12,000 a year, or 1% of the gross revenue, whichever is higher, is the way that it read. Is that what you were talking about, Mr. Shown?
Well, I was saying it that way, or if we, you know, if Mr. Bailey, when he talks to their legal, you know, if they balk at the idea of the thousand a month, because they're not sure of the revenues, then he could propose, well, how about 1% of your gross revenue, as a, you know, after this, after this first year, as a starting point. That way it's based upon the fact that you're making revenue off of it, it's not, you're in the red and you're still having to pay for a lease. I, you know, I don't, I don't want us to get too hung up on this, because we're going to be able to work with Bruce, but at the same time, we can't just assume, you know, everything's going to be rosy, because that's, that's when we're going to get in trouble.
Well, they should anticipate this because of their initial draft to us, just have $1 in there, which, like Mr. Bailey told me, that that will be negotiated later, and we're sort of at that point. So for clarification, what I think I hear you say, Commissioner, is first year, by proof of maintenance on the line, we'll waive the first year. After that, it starts at $12,000 a year, $1,000 a month. If they don't want that, Mr. Bailey could say, well, would you consider 1% of gross revenue? Is that, to that?
That's what I was saying, yes.
Yeah. I fully agree. Let them get the year under them, because they're going to have a mandate. Let them get the year under them, 'cause they're gonna have massive expenses. And then we go to either twelve thousand a year or one percent.
So, Mr. Bailey, what do you think with that conversation?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think as long as I say, look, the point is, we'll have some administrative costs, but if you guys aren't making money on the railroad, we don't want to be burdening you with an additional cost. So, that's the spirit in which it's being proposed.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that's, that's exactly right. We want them to succeed, and we don't want them to feel like we're trying to nickel and dime them while they're trying to get going and provide that service for all current and future shippers.
We'll all be expending money either through the time that they put on it, or they'll be putting money and trying to get things up and going. So, they can see on the first year is reasonable. Now, if it comes down to one percent of their gross, then it's, we'll have us on how we're gonna monitor what their finances are. And that's kind of.
They do have to provide us with a lot of reports, so we can probably put together.
I was just gonna say, I've seen a lot of reports, quarterly reports.
We've required that, or requested that. Okay, so.
And just for clarification on that issue about their finances, we are agreeing that we can examine their books, but they don't give us the books because they, or print off the books and give it to us because then that would be a public document, they don't want that necessarily out. So we will simply have access to review their books.
Lots of confidence with that.
Yep, thank you for that clarification, that was important. So, all commissioners are in agreement for Jim to carry that forward as articulated?
Uh-huh.
All right, page seven.
I don't know how you think.
I don't either.
Page eight?
The only thing, and I would come to next, the newest comment is still there. Mr. Bailey, it appears to me as though W, that paragraph is also the very same as the very first paragraph in X. Just is repeated again with other stuff.
Yes, that is correct. And V, change.
A.
Okay. Now I lost which page, we're on page nine now? Sorry about that.
Page nine.
Page nine? Page ten?
Well, page nine, are we there?
Yep, page nine, Commissioner.
Okay. I have under D, and it's probably just common practice, that the environmental matters, the county shall bear all responsibility and shall identify the operator for any contamination of the right of way, including without limitation third-party contamination occurring during or or after the term of this agreement or other contamination caused solely by the operator. The county can bear that responsibility?
Wow, I, good catch. I read that completely wrong because of, if they contaminate it, we're not gonna take on that responsibility.
Yeah, I think it's probably a missed typo, it should end with the word county and not operator.
Okay? Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, there's no way, we would not be identifying somebody else. But what they really wanting to do is that we're identifying them for anything that we do, that's the pay. That's what typically is done, so.
That's way out there.
Yeah.
Now, I read it again, and I'm reading it different, so I need legal help here. So, it's saying they are taking.
Oh, okay, wait a second, yeah, you're right, let me, let me go close closely. County is our responsibility to identify the operator for any contamination.
The key thing is.
Something's missing there.
Other than contamination caused by the operator.
Right, right.
So they are taking that responsibility.
Yeah, but there's, there's still, you're right, they are. They're, they're saying that we are responsible other than the contamination that they cause, but there's some language missing in the middle there because it says, identify the operator for any contamination of the right of way, including without limitation. Oh, okay, third-party contamination, okay. Yeah. Yeah, somebody else, basically they're saying they're responsible for any contamination, they do, but we're responsible for any contamination cleanup caused by the county or someone else.
Yeah, so they're saying if a third party tips over a fuel truck there, we will be the ones taking them to task.
That's right.
That's way right.
So, this is okay as written, yeah, okay.
So, I have another question for you, Jim. This is all within the right of way. If they do a spillage on a string course and the stream takes the contamination outside of the right of way? How does that last?
This is not limited to the right of way. Oh, I'm sorry, contamination of the right of way, yeah. That's just contamination right of way, it's not limited to that. So, anything that goes beyond that, it's not excluded. This just talks about the right of way.
All right. Everything good? No, maybe?
I would, whoever's contamination outside of the right of way, that is, we're not giving that up. We can still go forward on them.
So, if there's contamination within the right of way that goes into Pitt River, which is off the right of way, the origin of the original contamination should be the cause of it, so they would be liable?
Right, whoever's on contamination.
That's it, ten, that's it written.
No, you don't need to do that, this is just talking about within the right of way. And really, you don't need to put that in there. In fact, this doesn't even need to be put in there, it's just a clarification for their, their purposes. If someone were to cause contamination, if there's an event that causes contamination outside the right of way, then that party's responsible for it, we're not giving up anything. We're not saying that we're responsible for everything else.
Yep. All right, page ten. I have nothing. Mr. Shown?
No, I'm fine.
Page eleven?
Page eleven, and I, I'm trying to read ahead. I have quite a few things highlighted, but it might all be fine. Under the first paragraph, maintenance track, and the last, or under the first part, maintenance track, but the last paragraph, I put a note out to the side, is this in conflict with six B? That last paragraph, and I, I suppose we just have to read it here and see.
Is what in conflict with six B?
Is the second paragraph of that opening statement before we get to the subpart A, B, C, and D, the second paragraph where it says, "The operator will not, however, be required to undertake any capital improvements to the track to undertake any significant repairs to the trackage that are not occasioned by ordinary wear and tear. Subject to the foregoing, the operator commits to the following upkeep of the track." And then in D, it says, "The operator shall be responsible for the cost of capital replacements, repairs, or reconstruction, reconstruction necessitated by such as natural disasters against which insurance is not normally available, and non-routine maintenance of destruction integrity of bridges and other infrastructure of trackage." And I just, the question I put out to the side, is this in conflict, those two paragraphs? One, they're not responsible, are not required to do it, and the other.
Are required to take capital improvements other than ordinary wear and tear, and then they are responsible for capital. Yeah, that's right, there, there is a conflict there. It's similar to the conflict that was in the other previous agreement too. Yeah, I'll have to point that out too. Let's see, it's, well, wait a second. We've got capital improvements, they're not required to undertake any capital improvements, undertake any significant repairs, and then they shall be responsible for the cost of capital replacements, repairs, and construction caused by natural disasters.
Well, the natural disasters, I didn't highlight it, I highlighted, I, I, "Non-routine maintenance of structural integrity of bridges and other infrastructure of the trackage." So that, that second part of that sentence covered the trackage. I liked the, I said, I think this is good, the integrity of the bridges. But up above, the trackage parts in conflict, as I read it.
Yeah. I, I think you're right, I think it is, and I understand that section ten is the force majeure section, which says, if something extraordinary happens, then that lets them out of their obligations. You know, and force majeure means something that's totally unanticipated, it doesn't mean a flood, it means a flood of biblical proportions kind of thing. And so, this needs to be tweaked a little bit because you're right, it's either, it's just gotta be changed a little bit.
Well, what goes with that, Mr. Bailey, to kind of back that up, the B part in conflict with the above part of D, where it says, "Subject limitation to section ten, the operator shall be responsible for the cost of compliance with FRA's bridge safety standards set forth," like, all that stuff, "and for any rehabilitation, reconstruction, replacements, or repairs required thereunder." So, you know, I think, and I put good out to the side of that too, 'cause I think, I think we got, I think we got what we need in there. So long as someone doesn't point to the part up above and say, well, it says up here, we don't have to do it.
So you'll clean that up, Mr. Bailey, so that it, we truly are protected on the bridges and the other? So they're not conflicted?
Well, just sort of conflicting statements about.
Yeah.
About.
Yeah. See, I think what they're trying to say is, they don't have to undertake capital improvements that are really not part of a normal operation. But they are responsible for capital improvements necessary to continue to run the railroad. I think that's what's trying to be said, so let me just clarify with him because that's.
Well, if you read the very last part of six, it says, "Subject to the foregoing, operator commits to the following upkeep of the trackage." So, six explains what they won't do, but then all the subs underneath that is a whole nother thing that they're saying they will do.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
That last sentence says, "Subject to the foregoing, the operator commits to the following upkeep of the trackage." And you go A, B, C, D, right on down, that's where we got the bridge, bridges in there, and all that. So.
Well, it, it does need to be clarified just because they're, they're definitely in conflict. And normally you would not write a contract that says, we're not responsible for this, however, we are responsible for that. You're, you're inviting litigation over that, so we should address that now. Let me see what he says about it.
Okay. So then we move to page twelve, unless you have anything else on page eleven? I have nothing on twelve because I got the clarification and the definitions under what, of writing means, in writing means. I have had it marked under F. Where it asks for pre-approved additions. Everything has to be in writing, so I have nothing further than just that comment.
I only took time to review this this morning, so I was getting kind of sketchy in this lot of pages.
Oh, yes. So, page thirteen?
I have nothing on thirteen.
No, I don't either.
Page fourteen? Fifteen?
Well, under fourteen, and, and once again, you have to bear with me, under eleven D, I wrote out to the side, wow. So I'd have to say and read back through that, and maybe I'll do that as we're going on to fifteen or whatever.
Yeah, number eleven, can I?
That's it.
Go ahead.
You go ahead. Well, I was gonna say, number eleven B, that's just to say that if they're operating, we're gonna give them preference over someone else who comes in who hasn't been operating. That's not saying that we have to, it just says, part of this is the understanding that they're gonna be the ones that we want to operate, we're not gonna arbitrarily say, no, we're gonna pick somebody else.
Yeah, I had to read that number eleven twice, but I came up with satisfaction with it.
Okay.
All right, page fifteen? Page sixteen? We're at page seventeen?
Uh, oh, we had that corrected, didn't we, Mr. Bailey, on sixteen, the Roman numeral I V? This, the typo. The county shall pay term under.
Yeah, that was correct yesterday.
Okay, I have quite done to that.
What Commissioner Shown's pointing out is a Roman numeral, small capital IV, it says in the text, the county shall pay termination cost of one hundred thousand dollars, and then in parentheses, it says sixty thousand, and the one hundred thousand has been changed to sixty thousand.
So you're saying, copy, the one you sent me while we were talking on the phone, actually still has a hundred thousand in there? So you must've changed it later.
Yeah, we changed it, it was actually changed while you and I were having a conversation, I sent him an email and he changed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, page eighteen? And page nineteen?
I said we find it.
Okay, let me catch my breath. I'm, I'm with you with some caveats, but first, under C, for some reason I have it highlighted, I have to read it again.
Geez, I thought that just got into legalese and I didn't.
So it talks about, for safety purposes, wire, pipeline causing. I guess that's just saying that we will communicate with them and get the operators' written approval before we agree to any of the right-of-way stuff. Jim, is?
Right, yeah.
Is that okay?
Basically, they're worried about things that might interfere with their operation.
And I think that, you know, quite honestly, they, 'cause we kind of ran into that in a different sort of manner, I think that's only appropriate because, on one hand, we're making them totally responsible for all rail line safety operations, and they're responsible for that right of way. So it's only right that before we propose doing something, that they know what we're doing and sign off on it.
But, the way I read it, earlier we talked about utilities and other things being on in the right of way, which is county property, we're having to say so. And of course, working with them. Here it says, operator's approval.
Yeah, why don't I have them, that will insert that, for safety purposes, the county agrees it will not permit alternate use of the tracks right of way. That will interfere with the operator's obligations and operations without the operator's written approval.
Are the operator's knowledge?
Yeah, I'd like to knowledge, knowledge better because of, if, if we ended up with a disgruntled operator and we have a major project that's gonna be built, and we need to do that, it says, if we don't have the written approval, we can't bring anything down that right of way. So.
Yeah, there's the word approval there.
The written approval.
Wait, 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 wait. The language that I'm suggesting is that it limits them, their approval for anything that would interfere with their obligations and operations. If it's not gonna interfere with them, then we don't need to get their approval. But it seems to me that if it is gonna interfere with their operation or their other obligations, that absolutely, they would have a right to say, whoa, you got to take with us first, you can't just build a pipeline across the track and now we can't run our operation.
I, for my comfort zone, and I'm wrong many times, but I'd rather have something there that says, we'll coordinate with them on any, on all that verbiage is there, but I don't want any board of commissioners to be held up that we have to have something in writing before we're able to agree to a pipeline coming down that right of way, or a new utility line of any sort. If we ended up with a disgruntled operator, they could withhold that in writing, and then we become a legal battle between the attorneys.
No, I'm, I'm. Okay, let me, yeah, I, I. Okay, let me, yeah, I, I agree, I hear what you're saying, let me, I can figure out some language to put in there and express our concern about that, so I, I think that's totally appropriate.
Yeah, it's, the word approval is the one that sticks. Am I concerned?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree.
So, so with that, um, Mr. Bailey, and, and I know Commissioner Shown was just verbalizing some thoughts there earlier, um, is it possible to approve this contingent upon all those things being agreed upon by the other party? Uh- Or would you rather hold off until we get those agreements and make that decision? I know, I know that it's, there's, um, some ongoing, very serious issues with, uh, operations now, as far as the cost to the shippers and things, so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned.
Well, because, because of that very issue, Commissioner, I, I would ask Mr. Bailey if he could, I'm sure, hey, you've taken good notes, Mr. Bailey, and you're gonna make the necessary changes in the request back to their legal counsel, and if it was simply said to them, "We're willing to take action," I, I don't know about the other two commissioners, uh, you know, I, I don't know when it's gonna work for anybody, even on a phone call, just to give a thumbs up, but it's gonna be contingent upon you all agreeing to what was, what's being proposed. So, the financial issues that are dogging them right now, and other issues around that, it's gonna give them incentives to want to conclude this really quick, too.
Right. Um, you know, I think most of what we're talking about here is really simply addressed, and I'm just gonna propose it to them as our, um, position, and that, that you've approved it subject to these changes, and if they come back with anything different than, um, we haven't approved it, and so, we gotta have a meeting, so I think you're right, I think we can present this to them, uh, in that fashion, so you can approve it subject to these changes.
Yes.
So, with, with that, I would entertain a motion in that section.
So-
So, Lou, so second?
So, motion's been made and seconded to approve the operating lease as amended with full, uh, full agreement from the other side. If the other side does not agree, we will have another meeting.
Okay, and I, I'll take care of that right now. I also got an email back from, uh, their attorney regarding exhibits A, B, and C, and he said, "The exhibit references were taken from the Lake Railway, LRA lease agreement. I was given the text of that agreement, but never the exhibits, so I don't have them, but I'm sure the county would, if it has a complete copy of its lease with Lake Railway." So, essentially, we get to put whatever we want to into exhibit A, B, and C.
And I agree with it.
Okay. Um, I'm looking at Mr. Berman, and he's, he's got some work to do there, I will help him. Um, so, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Bailey, with that being said, uh, that would trigger the next step, if they agree to everything we put there, of having to have, go forward with the STB filing, I believe I'm correct, so I, the direction would be for you to coordinate all the things associated with a new operating agreement. Am I correct on that?
Okay.
That's direction, sir? Nothing further to come before us. Thank you everybody for their time, thank you so much for putting the time into this board, this is a big decision for all of us.
Yeah, big thanks to Cornice Home stepping up.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, but you guys, you put work into it.
Yeah, so-
Yep.
So, with that said-
Okay, all of you.
We will-
I'll communicate everything back to you as soon as they get the, the word.
Thank you. We will adjourn at 20 minutes to 5. Thank you.